Well, good evening, and I will say thank you, Mr. John Shaw, for that very lovely prelude music tonight, and you ended with "God Bless America", so thank you. Let's give him another round of applause. I would like to call this meeting of the Temecula City Council to order, and tonight we have for our invocation, Mr. Sylvester Scott of the Bahai Community of Temecula. We haven't seen him in awhile. How are you? We spoke just before. And we will have the flag salute by Councilmember Chuck Washington. So if you'd please stand.
The prayer first?
Yes.
O thou forgiving God, these servants are turning to thy kingdom and seeking thy grace and bounty. O God, make their hearts good and pure, in order that they may become worthy of thy love. Purify and sanctify the spirits, that the light of the sun of reality may shine upon them. Purify and sanctify the eyes, that they may perceive thy light. Purify and sanctify the ears, in order that they may hear the call of thy kingdom. O Lord, verily we are weak, but thou art mighty. Verily, we are poor, but thou art the rich. We are the seekers, and thou art the one sought. O Lord, have compassion upon us and forgive us. Bestow upon us such capacity and receptiveness that we may be worthy of thy favors and become attracted to thy kingdom. That we may drink deep of the water of life, may be enkindled by the fire of thy love, and be resuscitated through the breaths of the Holy Spirit in this radiant century. O God, my God, cast upon this gathering the glances of thy loving kindness. Keep safe each and all in thy custody and under thy protection. Send down upon these souls thy heavenly blessings. Immerse them in the ocean of thy mercy, and quicken them through the breaths of the Holy Spirit. O Lord, bestow thy gracious aid and confirmation upon this just government. This country lieth beneath the sheltering shadow of thy protection, and this people is in thy service. O Lord, confer upon them thy heavenly bounty, and render the alporians of thy grace and favor copious and abundant. Suffer this esteemed nation to be held in honor, and enable it to be admitted into thy kingdom. Thou art the powerful, the omnipotent, the merciful, and thou art the generous, the beneficent, the lord of grace abounding.
Thank you, Sylvester.
Please join me in the pledge to our flag by placing your right hand over your heart. Face the flag and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Washington. Could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Camachero?
Here.
Nigar?
Good evening.
Roberts?
Here.
Washington?
I'm here, thank you.
And Mayor Edwards?
Here, thank you. Councilmember Nigar started something, and he started asking in the audience. We have high schoolers here today, so who's here from TVHS? Where are the bears? Oh, wow, a lot of bears here tonight. Pumas, are you out here? Pumas? Good. Kay? Great Oak? Wolf Pack? Anybody? Oh! Two? Don't be shy. And do we have any Lions from Linfield? Nope, just checking. All right, well, welcome to the Temecula City Council meeting. We know that you have to stay an hour, so don't be sneaking out of here at like 10 till 8, unless we're through. That's why we have police officers stationed in the back of the room. We have a very, very special presentation tonight, and it comes with a wonderful story. So I would like to have Jack Ragland come up. Please, sir. Very, very talented. Yes. You have to come up to the microphone. And I don't know if we can focus any of our cameras on that beautiful painting, but he has painted this beautiful picture of the Santa Margarita Canyon for City Hall, but it really didn't start out that way. You want to share a little bit the story of how we are going to benefit here at City Hall by the painting?
Well, my family and I were concerned, as many people were, about the threat of the quarry coming in here. And so I originally painted this as a kind of statement of what would, how the beautiful serene setting would be affected by the quarry, and the wildlife corridor where the animals cross right back and forth would be completely interrupted. So it was my goal that this would be used as funds to to protect us from the threat of the quarry, and, um, thank goodness, I didn't have to use it because of the purchase by the Pachanga tribe. So, anyway, that, I thought it would be a great thing to make a presentation for the city of Temecula.
And we also have to thank the generosity of Kathleen Hamilton, because in the interim, prior to when you were planning on selling the painting, you kind of gave it to Kathleen to safeguard and babysit and watch.
Right, well, Kathleen spearheaded, I mean, she was just so tireless in her efforts to organize all these events, and she seemed to admire it, so I thought, well, who would better appreciate it than her? And then she said, why don't, why don't we give it to the City Hall? So I was thrilled about it. She was generous enough to do that.
So thank you, Kathleen, for, you know, relinquishing this beautiful piece of art. And, you know, we've seen pictures of the canyon, and it may be in that exact location, and it's remarkable, absolutely remarkable. So we are so appreciative that you have given this to us. We will find a prominent place to display it, so that people can come and admire it. And I also think we need to include a plaque that kind of tells the story.
Well, I want one other point. There were a number of people that had ideas about how it could be used to generate money and so forth, and I can't remember who it was exactly, thought that the mountain lion would be inappropriate because it might turn off the hunters or something like that. So I painted the mountain lion out, but Kathleen said she liked it, so I painted it back in. It's now back in the picture.
Well, I think even hunters can appreciate a beautiful wild animal like a mountain lion, so, so we can't thank you enough. Does anybody have any comments they'd like to make? Jeff?
Well, certainly, thank you very much. I know when Kathleen contacted me back a couple of months ago, I was thrilled, and thank you for that. But equally important, I look out and I see the brain trust of the group that worked with us side by side, or maybe it's better to say we worked with them side by side, to come out with a positive result. So it's awfully nice to see everybody back here in the council chamber. And, Jen, thank you so much. I don't think we can express how appreciative we are. And I agree with the mayor, Mr. City Manager. We not only need to find a very appropriate spot where the public can see it, but also a commemorative plaque that details a little bit of the history and the story. And what better place for that to hang than beneath that beautiful picture that really commemorates what we saved? So, thank you very much.
I also wanted to thank all the people. I had no idea that they were going to all get together and support me here, so thank you all for coming.
It's your artist fan club. So, and thank you all, SOS Hills. Oh, and Jack, I forgot. Happy birthday. Today's your birthday.
You're supposed to get presents, not give presents.
You're supposed to get presents, not give them, so we'll just say happy 39th birthday and leave it at that. So, thank you. All right. We're going on to public comments. A total of 30 minutes is provided, so members of the public may address the city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the city council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the speak, prior to the city council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing that item. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, we have six requests to speak.
All right.
First is Carol Monroe, to be followed by Patrice Lines.
Ms. Monroe, how are you?
I'm doing well, and you?
Good.
Carol Monroe, I live in Temecula. A vagrant is an itinerant person without a home or employment. And I'm speaking tonight in regards to the dangerous and disgusting issue of vagrants in Temecula. Seems the city of Temecula is doing nothing to clean up the city or to protect our city from these vagrants. More and more street bums and felons, call them homeless if you must, if it makes you feel better, more and more are being seen in every area of this city, and Old Town is especially plagued with the problems they're causing. They're being portrayed as harmless and just a nuisance. If that's so, then why is the Temecula City Corps recently did a homeless veteran head count survey, and this email was sent to their members and anyone who wished to volunteer. I'm going to condense it. Volunteers to ride with the Temecula Police Deputy. Areas to be covered: creek beds, bridges, underpasses. And I found out later, they're also living in tunnels around town. Do not wear tennis shoes, as the ground may be wet, and there will be cans, bottles, broken glass, and needles. Don't wear anything that advocates a position or could be offensive. Bring a flashlight, it will still be dark. Do not bring a wallet or valuables, just carry a driver's license for identification. I'm assuming that's so if something happened, though, you could notify their next of kin. As a sidebar, I was later told that the reason a volunteer was not to bring valuables was so that, in case they felt sorry for this harmless homeless, that they would not be tempted to give their wallet or watch to them. That's a, go ahead, roll your eyes on that one. No weapons of any kind, example, survival knives or multi-tools. A police officer will be with each team. I'm assuming they were for protection from the homeless, the harmless homeless. At the TCC meeting a week later, it was mentioned that while the volunteers were doing the paperwork on this survey, the deputy had one hand on his flashlight and the other hand on his gun. Harmless, safe? And it says, bring a fully charged cellphone. And once the survey is done, everyone was to go back to Great Oak's conference room for a head count to make sure that everybody got back. Does any of this strike you as safe or harmless or just a nuisance? City money is being spent on high-priced consultants. Legal maneuvers seem to be commonplace, yet there seems to be no solution to rid this city of convicted felons, many violent. There are thieves, drug users, drug pushers, falling down drunks, and vagrants who use public services, public streets as their bathrooms, and this list just goes on. I've asked you before, and I'm going to ask you again, all of you. What are you doing to protect this city?
Thank you, Ms. Monroe. I can tell you that over the past two months, Councilmember Nigar, thank you, you can sit down. Councilmember Nigar and I have met with the police department, and with legal counsel, and with members representing Team Pantry and Mission of Hope. And we will be approaching this with a three-pronged approach that involves enforcement, education of the community, and rigorous programs offered by nonprofits. The city will have no money invested in providing programs, but, and we're probably going to be bringing this forward within the next, what, two months? Two months? Yes, so we have been working on this issue. It's just that nothing, you're not seeing anything, and I can tell you that people were down in the creek within the last 10 days, cleaning out, removing debris, and, you know, trying to help people move out of the creek. So, no one is allowed to break the law, and it will be enforced on people and vagrants just as it would have been enforced on regular residents. So we'll be bringing that forward in the next couple of months. So, thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Patrice Lines, to be followed by Mark Catan.
Hi, good evening. John Adams said, "Facts are stubborn things." So what are the facts? January 28th, when a quorum couldn't be reached due to financial conflicts of council and RandCon, a fishbowl was brought out, and a conflicted councilman's name was drawn. Councilmember Camachero was chosen to vote. He is CEO and president of RandCon. He voted to abstain. Councilman Roberts should have recused himself. Not only does his son work for RandCon, according to the state of California, but Dan Stevenson is the owner and broker of RandCon Real Estate. Furthermore, Councilman Roberts works as a legislative assistant to Supervisor Jeff Stone. Ron has recused himself in the past when property came within 500 feet of the county line, and this property was within 500 feet. Why did you not recuse yourself? In addition to an ethics violation, Government Code 1090, the FPPC letter in the staff report under, of January 28th, Agenda Item 15, states that if any council member has a financial interest, he must disqualify himself, according to Government Code 87-100. So in my opinion, the council has entered into a landmine of ethics violations, 1090 and Government Code 87-100, which disallows a council member with economic interests to vote. Conflict of interest laws were required due to this being a discretionary, not ministerial vote. Mr. Thorson, on February 8th, you gave the rationale that it was ministerial, yet it was discretionary. In fact, you stated on January 28th, it was, it was discretionary. And that is why the conflict of interest law was applied. According to a legal expert, the FPPC only has authority to give advisory opinions, but does not have enforcement authority. This whole thing does not pass the smell test. An investigation needs to be done by the DA and the Attorney General. Basically, no man can serve two masters. And council, you are serving RandCon and Dan Stevenson, not the citizens of Temecula. Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, would you like to respond?
Yes, I will. We disclosed all of the facts of the relationship of Mr. Camachero, Mr. Nigar, and Mr. Washington with respect to RandCon. Their advice was that on that particular matter, because the fact that there was going to be a subdivision improvement agreement, that they needed to recuse themselves, but because that dropped below the quorum level, the FPPC also said that random selection was appropriate. So that we followed their advice. The advice was prospective, and we did exactly what they told us to. And we even followed exactly what they determined to be the appropriate methodology for doing the random selection. That's why we used the clear bowl, so everybody could see exactly how that was being done. With respect to Mr. Roberts, even if his son did work for RandCon, there would not be a conflict because his son is not a dependent. It's only dependent children of a council member that you count their economic interest. The fact that he may still be licensed as a real estate broker does not mean that he works for RandCon, and Mr. Roberts said that he doesn't work for RandCon. So there was no conflict of interest there. There's no county interest. They approved the Europa Vineyards project many years ago, so there's nothing pending there. So, in my opinion, and in the opinion of the FPPC attorneys, we have done everything proper in addressing that particular development.
The FPPC being the agency that opposes the law or monitors compliance with the law?
Yes, the Fair Political Practices Commission. They, they interpret and enforce both the Fair Political Practices Act and Government Code Section 1090, so.
So they do enforce?
Yes, they do.
Okay, and Jeff, did you want to say?
No, you addressed my point, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Nope. All right, next speaker, please.
Mark Catan, to be followed by Ernie White.
Mr. Catan, how are you?
Terrific, thank you. And I'm here on behalf of Temecula Valley Foundation for Excellence in Education. And our foundation is designed to raise additional funds for the local schools. With all of the cutbacks and the things that they've gone through, the arts, sciences, and music have been greatly diminished, and so we're providing funds, just short of $50,000 back from our events so far, back to the local schools, so. I'm just here to say thank you to all of you, and thank you for the fantastic community services staff to make the Fourth Annual Taste of Temecula Valley a reality. So, not a reality rally, we'll be two weeks after then.
Something else.
But, yeah, the Fourth Annual Taste of Temecula Valley, we will be on Mercedes and Main in front of this beautiful facility, and it's going to be another great event. Timmy D Productions is handling all the entertainment this year. We will be April 26th, from 11:00 in the morning till 7:00 at night. Food, wine, microbrewers, and an expanded kids' zone. A lot of fun, a lot of great entertainment, and some amazing food. So, look forward to seeing you there, and as many people that can attend. We had attendance of a little over 5,000 last year, so we're hoping for, you know, close to 7,000 this year. So, we're excited, so it should be a good event.
Thank you, Mark. It is a wonderful event, and I would encourage everyone to attend and see what Temecula has to offer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please? Mr. White, how are you?
To be followed by Kathy Byning.
How you doing, Madam Mayor? To the city council, and all of the managers and directors, I want to also talk about the January 28th quorum, and the city attorney keeps mentioning the FPPC, but you won't mention Section 1090. And Section 1090 is the rule that we're talking about. Also, with the RandCon Real Estate and Ron Roberts' son, I know that doesn't matter because his son is not a dependent, but as of today, the state of California still says he works for RandCon Real Estate. When it comes to the conflict of interest, we're talking about Section 1090. We're not talking about the FPPC. We're talking about when contracts are done and when you have a financial interest. When you have a financial interest, you must not vote, and you must recuse yourself. You can't even vote if you have to have a quorum. And to all the kids that are here today, when you have five city council members, in order for a vote to go through, you need at least three city council members sitting. So that's what a quorum is. You've got to have a quorum. But you can't have a quorum if you have a 1090 violation. So right now, we have a 1090 ethics violation because we're talking about a contract, and we're talking about financial interest. So nobody should have even been here to fulfill the quorum. If you look at the Supreme Court, the Supreme Court says that a member cannot even fulfill a quorum if there's a 1090 violation, or even a possible 1090 violation, ethics. Violation, happening. But that's what we did, we filled a quorum with a fishbowl. We actually dug into a fishbowl and pulled out a name, and we actually pulled out the president of RandCon Real Estate. How can the city council serve Temecula and serve Dan Stevenson and RandCon Real Estate at the same time? How can we have Camachero president of RandCon Real Estate? How can we have Washington invested with RandCon Real Estate? How can we have Roberts, whose son works for RandCon Real Estate? How can we have Nigar, who's a consultant for RandCon Real Estate? And how can we have any one of you who gets all of your money for RandCon Real Estate for your elections? There was a case, Thompson versus Californian. City council member had sold a parcel of land to a third party, which in turn resold the property to the city, despite the fact that the council member had abstained from the council vote that authorized the city's acquisition of the property, and had acted throughout in good faith. The California Supreme Court concluded that he had violated Section 1090. As a sanction, the court required the council member to forfeit the entire sales price of $258,000 while the city was permitted to retain the property. Thus, where Section 1090 is violated, the government can get its money back without having to restore any of the benefits received under the contract. It states, "The fact that the contract is fair or even highly advantageous to the government," it's irrelevant. You broke the law. The mayor just said, "No one is allowed to break the law." This city council broke the law on January 28th with 1090. Talk about 1090, Mr. City Attorney.
Your time's up, Mr. White, thank you.
Kathy Byning, to be followed by Tom Byning.
Good evening. I noticed the fishbowl was not here tonight, so I brought my own. And since I've seen the fishbowl twice here before, I've started using it at my house. It just seems to be so convenient for making decisions like what to have for dinner, who's going to fold the towels, who's going to clean the bathrooms? And you know what the best part of it is? It's FPPC-approved. Now, tonight, I wrote down slips of paper with all of your names and your favorite conflict on it. Okay? And I'm going to put them in this bowl, so I can pull one out to, because I was trying to decide what to talk about tonight. Oh, and I have more that I've seen while I've sat here many nights and watched all of that. And, um, so I'm going to pull one out tonight, and I'm going to talk about whatever comes out. Oh, gosh, it's RandCon. It's RandCon. Okay. Since it's RandCon, and we're on that subject, I just want to say, Welty Hotel. Now that you've solved that little quorum problem, when are we going to buy that property?
Tom Byning?
Citizens of Temecula, Americans are justifiably angry, frustrated, and frightened of our government. Many of us feel that we have reached the point of no return in the erosion of our personal freedoms. Obamacare gone games, Benghazi cover-up, IRS targeting scandal, NSA spying scandal, chronic unemployment, lack of government transparency, waste, fraud, and abuse of our hard-earned tax dollars, out-of-control spending and crippling debt, outrageous salaries and pensions of public officials, corruption at every level of government. Ordinary solvable problems become crises, ginned up to scare us out of our wealth and sovereignty. We're told that we're running out of clean air, water, fuel, trees, living space, when in truth, there is an abundance of every resource on this planet. What we really lack is common sense and the political will to act in solving our problems. But why all the alarms? To control us, to rob us, to cement the power of career politicians and government workers? And what do they do after they've amassed a fortune in office and destroyed our neighborhoods and our towns? They quietly sneak off to a safer place, leaving us to deal with the messes they've made in Detroit, New Orleans, Los Angeles, San Bernardino, Hemet, Moreno Valley, Bell. But what can we do? Government stacked against us is too big, out of control. A smart man said, "In a democracy, people get the government they deserve." Well, the destiny of our country is still where it has always been, in your hands. Your voice, your vote. Here is where you have the best chance to reign in your government. Here is where you have a voice. This is your constitutionally protected soapbox to speak to the most important ingredient of our republic, the ones who really matter, the people. Participate in your government. Attend your local meetings. Question your leaders. Talk to your family, friends, and neighbors. Encourage them to speak out, to vote. Register them to vote. Or you could sit home and watch the game. Finally, on behalf of my generation, I apologize to our young citizens for falling asleep on our watch. We presided over the slow decay of our cities, our safety, our educational system. our educational system, our very constitution. Those of us who weren't gaming the system stood by and let them. Who did? I'm afraid we left you with quite a mess. Certainly nothing worth the $17 trillion debt that you have to pay off. The future of this country will soon be in your hands. I pray that you will be better guardians than we. Don't fall for the lies. Don't let them buy you off. Educate yourselves on the issues. Question your rulers. Don't swallow what they say, but examine what they do and hold them accountable for their actions. Resist the further erosion of your liberty.
Your time's up, Mr. White.
And to those who are truly unhappy with your leadership, stop tolerating this nonsense and simply turn out this November and throw the bums out!
Thank you, Mr. Byning. Next speaker?
No more speakers.
No more speakers, all right. So we're going to move on to council reports, and I'm looking for names in the queue. I saw people pushing buttons. Nobody? 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 Well, then, I'm gonna make a comment about it's Go Red for Women Month. The American Heart Association is educating people, especially women, about their symptoms, how to know when you're having a heart attack, because symptoms for women are different than symptoms for men. So if you have an opportunity, pull up the American Heart Association. Help your mom, your sister, your grandma, and your aunt stay safe and live longer. Okay, so... We'll move on to the consent calendar. "All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action." Number one, standard ordinance and resolution adoption procedure. Number two, action minutes. Number three, list of demands. Number four, approval of fiscal year 2013-14 mid-year budget adjustments. Number five, property, earthquake, and flood, automobile physical damage, and crime insurance policy renewals. Number six, sponsorship agreement with the Temecula Valley Balloon and Wine Festival Association for the Temecula Valley Balloon and Wine Festival Event, May 31st, June 2nd, 2014. Number seven, sponsorship request for Temecula Reality Rally, a fundraiser event for Michelle's Place. Number eight, sponsorship agreement with the Temecula Valley Foundation for Excellence in Education's 2014 Taste of Temecula Valley. Number nine, recommended distribution of the proceeds of Lieutenant Dan Band Benefit Concert at the request of the Military Ad Hoc Subcommittee, members Comachero and Washington. Number 10, Riverside County Mortgage Credit Certificate, MCC Program. Number 11, Second Amendment to the Agreement with Interwest Consulting Group for the Provision of Building Inspector Services. Number 12, First Amendment to Agreement for Consultant Services with Harris and Associates for French Valley Parkway Interchange, Phase 1, PW0704. Number 13, Temporary Street Closures for 2014 Spring Fest Events. Number 14, Second Reading of Ordinance Number 14-01. And number 15, Second Reading of Ordinance Number 14-02.
Move Consent.
I have a motion and a second, and no requests to pull or abstain. Mr. Washington.
Madam Mayor, in light of the fact that no one has pulled item number six, I don't need to leave the dais, but I will be abstaining. A small screen printing business that my wife and I own in partnership with our daughter and son-in-law has done work for the Balloon and Wine Festival in the past.
All right, then we'll make note that Councilmember Washington...
Madam Mayor, we do need the name of the business.
Oh, California Tea Screen Printing.
That's fine.
Okay, Member Washington's gonna abstain from item number six because of a potential conflict if he votes, so he will not be voting. And I have a motion and a second, so everyone, go ahead and cast your votes, noting that Councilmember Washington's vote is at an abstention on item number six. So all items pass unanimously. All right, so I am ready to recess the Temecula City Council meeting to the scheduled meetings of the Temecula Community Services District, the Successor Agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, the Temecula Housing Authority, and the Temecula Public Financing Authority. President Jeff Comachero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please let the record show that all directors are present this evening. Do we have any public comment under this portion?
No, sir, we do not.
Thank you. We'll go then to the consent calendar. Item 16, approval of the action minutes of February 11th. Item 17, approval of fiscal year 2013-14 mid-year budget adjustments.
Move Approval.
And item 18...
Wait, but wait, there's more.
Second Amendment with Keith Gore's DBA Good Time Rentals for Paddle Boat Concession at Harveston Lake. Did you want to exclude that?
No, he wants to paddle.
No. Yes, I need paddling.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? There is a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. That motion does pass unanimously. Before I get off this portion, you may notice, and those of you at home may notice, that I'm a little black and blue around my left eye. It has nothing to do with being beaten up at the beginning of this meeting, but I got hit with a golf ball. That's the romantic story, and I'm healing very well, so that's about it. Anyway, do we have directors' report this evening, Mr. Hawkins?
Yes, we do, Mr. President. As we approach the 2014 Temecula Ride Run, staff wanted to provide the board with an update on our progress. As you are aware, the Temecula Ride Run event has become a regional signature event, which increases tourism, revenue for the city's restaurants, hotels, retailers, and wineries. At the recommendation of the Economic Development Committee and direction of the city council, our TCSD Special Events Staff was tasked with taking the lead on the event and assembling a team that would produce the best ride run event yet. Towards that goal, the 2014 Temecula Ride Run Committee consists of Donna Demiak, our Recreation Supervisor of Special Events, Paula Worthington, our Senior Rec Leader, Mike Maury, our Senior Rec Leader, Bill Fritz, co-chair of the Drifters Car Club, Craig Puma, VP of the Old Town Temecula Association, and Ron Dahini, Drifters Car Club, in charge of logistical support. Since the fall of 2013, this team has met on a regular basis, identifying event sponsors, reviewing and refining both the vendor and registration process, working with the Old Town merchants to ensure that their input is considered in the planning process, and finally, putting the professional and family-friendly touches on the ride run planning event that are hallmarks of all of our city of Temecula Special Events. To date, we have over 575 verified car registrations. Actually, to date, we actually have 593 verified registrations. So we just counted right before the meeting. 24 VIP spots reserved, parking on Main Street around Town Square Park, and a package that includes breakfast and lunch on Saturday. Based upon past years, approximately 100 to 150 cars are registered on the day of the event, so we are actually ahead of our goal of 725 cars. We feel very good about that. Councilman Roberts, maintaining the tradition of the Temecula Ride Run, the activities start on Friday, March 7th, which is cruise night, followed by the show and shine on Saturday, March 8th. Friday's cruise night from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. will be led by professional car race driver Boris Ed, who will lead the crews in his personal race car. While Saturday, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., there will be the amazing cars on display, as well as the addition of a fun zone. Now, so for $5, you will receive a wristband that entitles you to unlimited fun all day long, located at the Sixth Street Parking Lot. This includes a Pinewood Derby Exhibition from 9:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m., slot car racing from 12:00 to 3:00 p.m., face painting, bungee trampoline, rock climbing wall, inflatable bounce house, slides, and much, much more. There are also 53 approved vendor booths, which consist of food booths with products such as sunglasses, handbags, promotional booths. And also, the Old Town Association approved all the vendor placements as to not interfere with the Old Town merchants. And to mitigate the traffic parking impact, the parking structure will be reserved for Old Town merchants and residents only on Saturday. Public parking with a free shuttle on Saturday only will be available at the following locations: A parking lot located at the intersection of Temecula Parkway and Old Town Front Street, Temecula Valley Entrepreneurs Exchange, and the Dirt Lot at the intersection of Santiago and Inez. Finally, staff wanted to thank the entire board for your support and confidence in us to bring forward another quality event, which makes Temecula the destination place to live, work, and play. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Kevin. Mr. Adams, general manager's report?
No, we'll see everybody at the Ride Run next weekend, so thank you.
Sounds good, thank you, Aaron. Do we have any board director reports this evening? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn to the next meeting of March 11th.
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any objection?
Nope.
Seeing none, we are adjourned.
Thank you. I will now take us to the Successor Agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency meeting. And I will tell the high schoolers that are here, the city council acts as different agencies within the scope of doing work for the city. So right now, we're putting on different hats, and we're going to become the Successor Agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency to conduct some business for that. So we can see that we... Roll call, we are all here. Are there any public comments?
No, there are none, thank you.
None, okay. So since we have some resolutions, I'm gonna go ahead and read this anyway. "A total of 15 minutes is provided so members of the public may address the Board of Directors on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the Board of Directors on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the board of directors addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record. For all public hearing or agency business items on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filed with the city clerk prior to the board of directors addressing that item. Each speaker is limited to five minutes." So now we'll go to the consent calendar. "All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Successor Agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action." Number 19, action minutes. Number 20, recognized obligation payment schedules for the period of July 1st, 2014 through December 31st, 2014, ROPS 15-15A. Number 21, approval and transmittal of the amended Long Range Property Management Plan in accordance with Health and Safety Code Section 34191.5. And do I have a motion?
Move the consent calendar?
Second.
And a second?
Madam Chair, I'll be abstaining from item 19. Minutes from the December 10th meeting. I was not in attendance at that meeting. I'll vote on everything else on the consent calendar.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And that is unanimous, noting an abstention for Councilmember Washington on item 19. Any reports?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing? Board of Directors, anyone? Anyone?
Move adjournment?
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that meeting stands adjourned. Okay, now, we're going to put on our different hat and go back and reconvene as the Temecula City Council. And we're moving on to departmental reports. Anything?
Madam Mayor, these are just receiving file.
All right, city managers' report, anything?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing tonight.
All right. Mr. Washington?
If you're ready for a motion to adjourn, I'd like to make that.
Yes, sir, I thought you might.
I'll second it.
I'll make that motion, and I ask that we keep someone very special in our hearts tonight as we adjourn. If you know of the Brewer Boys and their contribution to this community over the years, I can't recall a nonprofit effort that they have not supported. They're former contestants on The X Factor. But the heart and soul of this family, and what has driven these boys, is their mother, Elsa Brewer, who we lost Friday night. So I ask that we adjourn this meeting in memory of Elsa Brewer.
And I'll repeat that second.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. That's very wonderful. So I will accept a vote to adjourn the meeting in the name of Elsa Brewer.
You got a motion and a second?
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen. We stand adjourned.